Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, July 17th Board of Commissioners meeting. Commissioner Clark's going to do the invocation and I will do the pledge. Would you please stand?
Everyone would bow their heads.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we just come to you this night. We thank you for your blessings upon our community, Lord. Lord, we ask that you be over this meeting. You be with the citizens that are here. You be with us up here as the board and be with the staff. Lord, we pray for protection for our first responders in our community that lay it on the line each and every day to make sure that we're safe each and every day, Lord. And Lord, we just lift up the people of Texas that's still reeling from this devastating flood with hundreds missing, Lord. We pray for the search and recovery people that have come all over this world to help. Lord, we just lift them up and we pray for grace and mercy for each and every one. Lord, now be with us during this meeting, watch over us, protect us, lead, guide, and direct us, and we ask in your precious name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose a few amendments to the published agenda. First, I'd like to move to defer item number 27 to approve the issuance of a purchase order for the firefighter and protector ensembles of AEST Fire and Safety of Larenburg, North Carolina, utilizing the Quark approach and purchasing contract exemption in the amount of $144,140 to a future date.
Second. Take a moment. Okay, properly motioned in second. All in favor? Show your right hand. Any against? Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to propose that we defer item number 42, which is to consider the approval of funding agreement between Glen County and Rise Grizzly, Inc. for the Rise Grizzly Campus Redevelopment Project in the amount not to exceed $700,000, and it was by request.
Second. All right, properly motioned in second. All in favor?
And one more, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to pose a motion to add item, an item to the agenda, item 1.5 to the published agenda to receive a presentation of a certification plaque awarded to the Glen County Police Department by the Georgia Law Enforcement Certification Program.
Second. All right. That's been properly motioned in second. All in favor? Thank you. All right, we're going to move on. We want to present a proclamation.
If there's anyone here for either one of those items that would like to leave, he's going to give them.
Yeah, is there anyone here that's for either one of those projects that wants to leave? I see Mr. Myers. Anyone else? We'll give you a minute if you need it. Thank you, Thomas. All right, I'm going to present a proclamation recognizing July 26 through August 2, 2025 as Gulligichi Nation Appreciation Week. Now, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas Glen County, Georgia was founded in 1777, and whereas at its founding, native Gulligichi were here in this coastal region and throughout our state, and whereas the Gulligichi have been essential to the cultural fabric of our community, and whereas, as a result, we have celebrated their contributions by actively being a part of the Gulligichi Nation Appreciation Week since 2015, and whereas 2025 marks St. Helena Island's own chieftess, Queen Quitts' 25th anniversary as head pun de bode of the Gulligichi Nation, and whereas Queen Quitt has led the movement to protect Gulligichi culture, human rights, Grizzland Coalition, and whereas Gulligichi Sea Island Coalition was the first organization in world history to have Gulligichi in its name, whereas Gulligichi Sea Island Coalition continues to forward the mission of the Gulligichi Nation, whereas this is the 25th anniversary of the Gulligichi Nation, now therefore be it proclaimed this 26th day of August, July, this 26th day of July through August 2, 2025, as Gulligichi Nation Appreciation Week in Glen County, and call upon all of our citizens to participate in celebrating this week in support of activities happening locally and throughout the region under the theme of 25 years of self-determination, celebrating the roots and legacy of the Gulligichi Nation. In witness thereof, I set my hand the 17th day of July, 2025. Queen, would you come up?
Okay. You think you get to enjoy any more, right? I know, that's right. Thank you, sir.
Here's your proclamation.
I appreciate it. Can I see a few words?
Yes, ma'am, you may. You may.
All right. Peace and blessings, Glen County. How are the children doing this evening?
Good.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, because that been a little bit trite on this night, ain't it? Okay, then, gotta do better than that. He ain't amping all the good by himself. Y'all weekend, y'all need to leave dinner, I understand that. So, I'm glad he for there this evening, come all the way from Centalia Island, one more again to this area, to this area, please, to this Golden Isles, as some of the children call them, to be here one more again. But in 25 years, we done paid homage to the E-boys, we across showing up on the sun. We done did it with people like we family, we come from Sapporo this evening, Brother Jazz Watts there with we and things like that. And we done been on Lazarado Creek and all up and through this area, Reddawas, Right here in Brunswick, where we got the key to this area city. So, it's a blessing to do this year for 25 years, but a greater blessing to know how the children been to celebrate with we for 10 years. So, tanky, tanky to this year's commission for, as we say in church, think of not robbery, for honor, this year culture and things like that, and we legacy was still going on here in Glen County. And I so glad that Brother Jazz there, God sent him this evening, because our representative, Anita Collins, and our other representatives act lied, they couldn't be here this evening, but they said, "We're sending the brother from Sapporo. We're sending Brother Jazz." And I said, "How awesome," because I just watched him on a video yesterday. I said, "So, you're here tonight? It's good to see you in person." Because I intended to say, one of our treasures in the Gulligichi Nation, many of them exist in your Golden Isles, and one of them that we especially know, the world knows about, is Sapporo. And so, we want to make sure that the Gulligichi communities that are still there are able to retain the land, retain the cultural community and legacy that people have talked about for eons before I ever even came to Glen County the first time I knew where Sapporo was. And so, it's critical that we celebrate culture, but it's more important to be able to continue it, and we definitely need our land to do that. And so, Brunswick is the city in which they formed the first commission to actually hold on to Gulligichi culture in the township. So, it was a blessing to know when the county said, "We want to start celebrating with you the culture." So, I thank you, Chairman, and I thank this commission for doing this on our 25th anniversary, and I also want to just thank the rest of this Georgia coast, because Liberty County did theirs last night, Chatham County did theirs, and I got a key to Chatham County. That's a first for a county to give a key, all right? And so, y'all got them almost covered. Y'all got to get on Camden County, don't know, I know what they to do. Okay, but it's definitely a blessing to have this entire Georgia coast celebrating with us, and we're celebrating throughout the entire Gulligichi Nation from Jacksonville to Jacksonville. I left some of the flyers in the back. We got agendas for anybody here, because next Saturday, my home island, Centalia Island in South Cackalacky, in for two hours from here. Y'all can come on northward and get some good thing for Nampon, join him, get some good thing for Nampon, and things like that, and the drum boys sound at noon at Historic Penn Center. So, we will be there with Gulligichi Family Day. So, all of the family, we expect to come from throughout the nation, and y'all always been family to me here in Brunswick. So, on behalf of we representatives and the rest of the Gulligichi Nation leaders, we say, "Tanky, tanky, and God bless on the children. We look to see you in the celebrations." And Commissioners, y'all ain't got no excuses. Y'all got your personal invitations on y'all desk this now. So, I look to see all of y'all. If he get there before you, he might not leave you a plate, so y'all better come together. Thank you. Y'all, yes, they standing, good. He went old school, he popped the flasher.
Okay, next is, we're going to receive a presentation of the certification plaque awarded to the Glen County Police Department by the Georgia Law Enforcement Certification Program. Mr. Ed Dunsmore, would you come forward? And Chief Ebner, would you come forward?
So, as introduced, I'm Ed Dunsmore. I am currently now with the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police. I am the state coordinator for the state certification program. I spent 35 years in law enforcement before retiring for a day and coming to work for the association. I know what it's like as a chief to step out and say that I want my agency to be certified. You're opening your agency up to outside people to come in, not only look at your policies, but look at your practices, and make sure your practices match what you say you're going to do. There's 141 standards, but each one of those standards has about three or four bullet points to them, so it's about double the standards that you actually have to do. So, the process first starts with the chief stepping out and saying he wants to do it for his agency, okay? Then signs a contract with us. Typically, it's a three-year process. Somewhere during that point, we're going to send two people in to do a practice run, if you will, a mock assessment, and then I'm going to schedule two assessors to come out that are current law enforcement, usually senior command or certification managers that can come out and spend two days at the agency, looking over it from top to bottom, making sure they're in compliance. Like I said, it's over 141 standards and over nine chapters that the department has to come through. And once they're done, the team leader on that onsite writes a report, sends it to me. I proofread it, make sure that all the boxes are checked, everything was done in accordance, and then I send it to one of two committees, the Standards Compliance Committee, made up of 12 executives in law enforcement. They review it, sign off, and then it goes to the Joint Review Committee, which consists of another set of chiefs and chairs who review it again and sign off. So, I say all that to say, it is a long process. It's nothing that's a rubber stamp. So, I'm here on behalf of the association to present this plaque to the Glen County Police Department and their achievement in this certification, which there's over 500 agencies in the state. Currently, there's only 170 that have achieved this milestone. So, again, congratulations to you.
But before we continue, I'd like to bring up Keshala Thorpe, who is our Police Department, Glen County Police Department Coordinator for Accreditation, Lieutenant Brandon Gregory, and the rest of the command staff, if you could all join me up here. This is completely an agency accomplishment, and we couldn't do it without any of that, so.
So, there's always one person that's responsible for making sure that everything is done, right? Files in, ready to go, calls me. I think we had multiple conversations over the period of time, making sure it was all right, but it's my distinct honor, along with the chief, to actually present this to the certification manager, who really makes sure the job gets done and everything's organized. So, congratulations.
I know you don't want to do this, but I want you to say a couple of words. It's a lot of work you went through, and we're continuing. You deserve the credit.
I just want to thank Ed. I called him countless times. I have his personal number. I text him, I emailed him, I called him, I sat through countless meetings. I want to thank Lieutenant Gregory, because I don't know how many meetings we had in his office where I was. I told him I didn't know what I was looking for, and I just described a piece of paper, and he was able to find it. And I want to thank command staff and the chief, because there was many meetings about policy and reviews and things that I felt needed to happen for us to achieve this award, and I think we did it in under three years. And I came from a retail background, I knew nothing about law enforcement, but these people behind me really stepped up and developed me in order to achieve these awards, so I want to thank y'all.
Well, on that note, Keshala, you did a great job. And when I first started, I made a promise to the commissioners that we were going to obtain state certification and move through with it, and we did. We made it a priority. I made it a priority, the command staff, our newest captain, Captain Ten Hagerty is in charge of our Office of Professional Standards and Accountability, and we're not only accepting this, we know there's a lot of work to maintain it, to continue it, but we're going to pursue the national accreditation through FOIA. And that was, of course, all the hard work that you put in here, Keshala, and Lieutenant Brandon Gregory, to get us past those 141 standards is a lot, and every officer, all the staff in the department worked really hard for this. So, I just want to thank them, because this is an agency accomplishment, and we're going to continue to do good things for the community and for you, Commissioners. So, thank you very much. Chairman, you want to join me in the middle?
Before we go on, I want to congratulate the police, because I sat on the police advisory panel when I first came on the commission in '21, and the then-chief and his sidekick were working on the same thing. Well, they got it done. So, I just want to congratulate you, Scott, and your people. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for both general business and finance, with the exception of any item a commissioner would like to put in. Second.
Okay, properly motioned in second, general business and finance. All in favor? Any against? Thank you. All right, let's move on to the first public hearing. This is an appeal. After receiving a verbal report from county staff regarding the appeal, both persons favoring and persons opposing the relief sought by the appeal shall have an opportunity to address the Board of Commissioners. The persons favoring the relief sought by the appeal shall be invited to speak first, followed by the persons opposed to the relief sought by the appeal. Each side shall have 30 minutes to address the Board of Commissioners. Upon request made to and approved by the Board of Commissioners prior to speaking, any single individual may speak up to 15 minutes. All others speakers shall be limited to no more than five minutes unless the permitted additional time by the Board of Commissioners. Any allowance of additional time shall not extend the overall 30-minute time limit per side unless more time is granted by the Board of Commissioners to permit a more complete discussion of the issue. Any rebuttal shall be allowed only within the overall time constraint set herein. Number 34 is an appeal of a Board of Appeals decision on ZV 25-19. Glen County Board of Commission received an appeal on June 12, 2025, decision by the Board of Appeals in Glen County, case number ZV 25-19. The Glen County Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing to consider the property owner's appeal of the Board of Appeals, June 12, 2025, denial of a variance, case number ZV 25-19, to allow reduced setbacks for a pool. The property is located at 106 Dunkied Lane, Sea Island, Georgia, parcel number 05-00680. Walter B. McClellan, Jr., Christina K. McClellan, owners and applicants. Ms. Leaf?
Hey, Goodwinny Commissioners, Stephanie Leaf, Planning and Zoning Director. This is ZV 25-19, and this is a property on Sea Island, and they have applied for a variance to their rear yard setback. So, they have about 25 feet that they're encroaching into the rear yard setback, so they have a new pool that they are installing, and it has a spa, and it's the spa portion that's jutting out that is extending into the rear yard setback. So, their resulting setback would be three and a half feet if they were granted the variance. Their PD text does require a seven-foot setback. So, they have applied, so this is in the Ocean Forest area of Sea Island, so they had applied to the Ocean Forest Property Owners Association for to the Ocean Forest Property Owners Association for design review approval, which is standard on Sea Island. And they, the Property Owners Association had approved this pool, and the owners had been unaware that there would also be a variance required because of the setbacks. And so during the process, when we were evaluating their pool permit, is when we discovered this and advised them to apply for the variance. And so this is the property where the star is located, and they did have, had an older pool that was on the property that they did remove before seeking this variance, so that was the new pool construction that triggered this. And I will note, so what this property backs up to is the Ocean Forest POA common area. So their previous pool, this does show that there were, actually, it was a point-five encroachment into the rear yard, and this was the one that was removed. And then their proposed pool, as I mentioned, the pool meets setbacks, but in red at the bottom of the screen is the spa, and that is the encroachment of three and a half feet. Just zoomed in view of that. So one of the bigger issues with the Board of Appeals when they review applications is hardship, and if the hardship was created by a current owner. And so this was the applicant's statement of hardship, that there were design restrictions on the property, and this was in order to meet their family's needs. This was the layout that they needed. And Sea Island did provide a public comment regarding how they feel this was an appropriate use, and the setbacks were not an issue for them. So the BOA did hold a public hearing on June twelfth, and they did deny this variance. The issues that did come up were regarding, you know, that there was a prior, a prior pool that was demolished before they applied for the variance, you know, whether applicants, you know, knew of the situation or not. And we didn't have any public, we didn't have any citizens that came in opposition to it, but there's a lot of, a lot of questions during that public hearing about design and whether it could be redesigned to potentially not need a setback variance. And so it was a two-two vote, which is considered not taking action. So we did have one member, there's five members on the board, and there was one member absent. So because it was a failure to act, it is considered a denial according to the code. So that is why it is eligible for you all to see this tonight as an appeal. So the applicant's agents did end up appealing that denial decision to the Board of Commissioners.
Stephanie, can you go back to maybe three now? Right there.
And so for this application this evening, I believe that owner Dr. McClellan is here this evening, and then Beau Parker and Blake Hightower from Salt Design Group, who's the landscape architects, are also here this evening.
Okay, you can go forward. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and that is the end of my presentation. Here's just your possible motions, either to affirm the denial, which would make the denial stand if the Board of Appeals made, or reverse the denial, which would then approve their application. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll now open the public hearing. Mr. Walter McClellan and/or Christine McClellan will address the board. Are they here?
I'm Blake Hightower with Salt Design Group. Dr. Walter McClellan's also here, but I'm here to answer any questions and to promote anything that you may have. Through the, through the process, we, that was brought up at the Board of Appeals, the design integrity and things like that, we went through multiple renditions and multiple conversations with the homeowners on their needs and wants. And one of the biggest things was just increasing the size of the pool for their family. They have small kids and a couple of them, so moving around, also having ample deck space to enjoy the pool area in their backyard. And so through the design process, this is where we have filled the best need for our design. And any other questions you may have?
Any questions, gentlemen?
I have.
Go ahead, Adam.
The old footprint, the old pool?
Yes.
What's the difference in the size of this one and that one?
There's about a twenty-five percent increase in pool area. It also includes the addition of a spa where it did not have one before. And by shifting the pool and doing what we've done, we've also added ample deck space on the kind of common area side of the pool to allow some, meaning before it was on the house side where the building provided shade and you wouldn't be able to sun tan throughout the time.
Okay, so the design is what caused it. Was that in compliance, the old pool?
The old pool was also encroaching into the rear setback.
What was the difference in the encroachment?
We're asking for, we've pushed the whole entire pool interior of the building envelope and just requesting for twenty-five square foot of the spa, where before, I don't have the actual information for the amount of square foot of spa that was, or the pool that was encroaching, but I believe it was about twenty-four square feet.
The difference, you say?
No, about one square foot difference of encroachment.
Are you gonna share something, Stephanie?
Yes, sir. We do have, we have an image of that older pool.
So the setback line's not drawn on this, on this survey, but there's a half-foot difference. But the length of the, the actual length of that pool, there's, I guess, about a twelve square foot difference of what we're asking for in encroachment versus what was before.
Twelve-foot difference?
Twelve square feet. Yes.
Do you have a picture of what you propose?
Yes, it's the next slide. It's the one that had the red box at the bottom. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. So we've pushed the majority of the building, it's just this three and a half by seven portion of the spa that we've asked to push into the encroachment or to the rear setback.
So without the spa, they would be in compliance or could be?
That's correct. But that's one of the, the design things that they've added, and they've wanted to have for the house, is a personal spa.
Okay, and I saw, I don't know if this is for Stephanie or not, did I see that there are other neighbors' pools that are not in compliance? Did I read that correctly?
That is correct, and I do have some of those photos here.
That's why I went back, Stephanie. I wanted to be able to read the whole thing.
Yes, sir, there are other pools in that, in that area that do not comply, that are also older, that were, you know, built twenty years ago or so, but, but they also encroach the setbacks.
So we're not the pool, please?
All right. Thank you.
All right. All right, we're gonna open the public hearing now. Anyone that wants to speak in favor, would you please come forward?
Good evening. I'm Walter McClellan, I'm the homeowner who has applied for the variance. And it's been a bit of a confusing process, and, you know, we set out with some goals. Number one, increase the swimming space for our children. And then number two, the purpose of the spa was we like to be down here year-round, so to have something available for colder weather months. And so that was the concept behind the whole project. We were sort of made aware that there was an issue with Glen County only after the pool had been demolished. So our contractor at that time, who we're no longer working with, affirmed for us that we had approval from the Ocean Forest Board and that everything was a go. They demolished the pool, and then the issue of needing a variance came up. So that's why we're going through the process as it stands right now, as opposed to having solved this on the front end. And the challenge for us admittedly is that that decision was sort of made for us in a sense, and if we had known that there was an issue with variance, then we never would have demolished the pool. And if the design that's been proposed wouldn't be feasible, then we may never have moved forward with it anyway. So we're now in a bit of a challenge and just trying to rectify the situation. But the, the goals of the process were obviously to enjoy the property more. There's also an element of safety where the current pool was very narrow, and as the kids jumped in the pool, they're actually not very far from the other side. Our goal was to move the pool away from the house. We do have young nieces and nephews, and it was, the design change that would make the pool closer to the house in order to resolve that three and a half foot. It does make it very dangerous. When you walk out the back door, you're effectively in the pool at that point. So we did have concerns about shifting it towards the house more perimeter. So that was a little, a little bit of backstory in terms of how we got to this place.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to come speak in favor? Seeing that I'm gonna close that portion, and now I'm gonna ask anyone that's against this reversal, would you please come forward, state your name, and give your reason? Seeing that I'm gonna close that portion. Commissioners, it's back to you.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion and also to offer a statement in regards to this. I'll move that we reverse the denial of the case number ZV two-five nineteen by the Board of Appeals. And the statement I want to offer is I'm in support of this. I've looked at it quite a bit, I've talked about it a lot. Generally, I'm kind of a hard-nosed when it comes to setbacks, but in this case, there's support by neighbors, and there's a lot of available buffer behind the existing lots in that neighborhood. My support of this does not endorse the violations that have already occurred by multiple neighbors over the years that have violated the setback without permission. So this is a one-off, in my view, in this case, and I think there's good reason to do it, given that the applicant has had the difficulties they've experienced with the contractor, basically led into a situation where they're simply asking for some help to get out of a bad situation, and I'll, I'll support that. So I offer the motion to reverse the denial.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? All right. The reversal, denial of case number ZV twenty-five dash nineteen by Board of Appeals, been properly motioned in second. All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. All right, public hearing abandonment. Public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present, to present your group's position of the time allocated. Your cooperation with this process will be greatly appreciated. Number thirty-five is AB dash twenty-four dash five, amendment of a dead-end section of Canal Road located on the west parcel, oh-three dash oh-three-one-eight-one, thirteen-twenty Canal Road, Brunswick, Georgia. Julian Smith, applicant. Mr. Hartman?
Yeah, I think we're getting the presentation pulled up here in one minute. Good evening, commissioners. Yes, this is for AB twenty-four dash five, thirteen-twenty Canal Road. A lot of the information on here is what was just stated. Part of the past history on this is this section of the easement has been used, as it currently is, for several years. There's no evidence of the roadway having been used by the general public. The potential use in the future would be that the public will continue to benefit from the ability to use the roadway for access and/or utilities. Benefit to the public in continuing usage would be that the public will continue, continue to benefit from the ability to use the roadway for access and adjacent parcels and/or utilities. The benefit that, to the public in the abandonment would be that the abandonment would be return to the property, to the tax digest. So a background on this, our staff in engineering has reviewed this application. The property that we're looking at tonight is highlighted in blue on the screen, Mr. Smith's property. So this is at the, at a dead-end street of varying public roadway. The area that we're looking to abandon varies, but ultimately, this is the area of a rectangular shape that Mr. Smith's seeking to abandon. A couple of photos, this is the north directional view, looking towards the end of the street And this is a south directional view. There were no public comments received during our posted period on this abandonment. We did have some utility comments related to drainage. Our Glen County Public Works Department has asked to retain a drainage easement over the entire abandoned area. There's a culvert on the property, on the abandoned area there that would need to be maintained. And also, Georgia Power would like to be continued to have access granted for their easement for overhead utility lines over the entire abandoned area. This is a snippet from Georgia Power where they were, had sent us an email asking to continue to have the easement that they already have for the utility lines out there. So with that, this is a list of the possible motion. Our staff's recommend, recommend motion is highlighted in red there. This concludes my presentation on AB twenty-four dash five. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer any of them.
Could you go back to the, I guess, the survey?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Yes, sir.
If you'll leave it there for a minute. Is there any questions, Mr. Hartman? Gentlemen? No questions?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone opposed who would like to come up and speak? If you would come up, state your name, you'll have five minutes. Seeing no opposition, we'll move to, anyone want to speak in favor? Come up, state your name, and you'll have five minutes.
After true resolve.
I'm Julian Smith. I own the property and share it with one of my sons and his family. At the time I bought this ten years ago, the dead end was being used by the public as a dumping area. I cleaned up, removed a lot of stuff. And for a while, because the house had been empty for some time, the previous owner had passed away, it was sort of a party spot. And after we fixed up the property and had someone living there, the people who'd been parking and throwing out beer cans and other things stopped doing that. So basically, the reason I'm interested in the county abandoning this part is, A, I've been maintaining the ditch, cutting up fallen trees, broken branches that come down from the county property on the other side. And it is the only spot on my property, which is almost two acres, that is open to the sun. So eventually, it might be a good location for my son or someone else to build a house with solar power. So, so I'd like to have more room in the sunlight. So otherwise, nothing is going to change. So if you have any questions, I'm here. Otherwise, thank you.
Is, is this landlocked?
I'm sorry?
Is this landlocked? Do you not have access?
Would you say that again?
I said, is it landlocked? Do you have access?
No, no. This lot is not landlocked. I own a couple of acres of budding the canal. That's landlocked, but that's another matter.
All right. I was just trying to figure out, because I don't see, I see public right-of-way, but I'm not sure where a road is.
That's the road. This is a driveway.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm good.
Thank you. Right. Anyone else wish to come up and speak in favor? Seeing none,
we're gonna close the public hearing. Commissioners, can you give us some motions, Jason, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve AB dash two-four dash five with the following conditions. Glen County to retain a drainage easement across the entire abandonment area, and Georgia Power to be granted an easement for access to overhead power lines across the entire abandoned area.
Second. Got a bunch of seconds. Properly motion, Commissioner Neal, second, I think. Mr. Swett was second. And Clark.
And Booker.
And Booker. Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Any against? No. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, number thirty-six. Abandonment of an unimproved fifteen-foot-wide unnamed alley running north and south along approximate center of parcel oh-three dash oh-eight-four-oh-oh thirty-seven twenty-one Hardy Avenue, Brunswick. Nero, Neri L. Molina, applicant. Mr. Hartman?
Yes, good evening once again. This is for abandonment AB twenty-five dash five thirty-seven twenty-one Hardy Avenue. So, some details on this, in the past history, this section of the abandonment has been used, as it currently is, for several years. There's no evidence of the alley having been used by the general public. Potential use for the future, the public could be beneficial for the ability to use the unnamed alley for access between Seventh Street and Eighth Street. Benefit to the public in continuing usage would be that the public will continue to benefit from the ability to use the alley for access to adjacent parcels and/or utilities. And then, the benefit to the public in this abandonment would be that the abandonment would return the property to the tax digest. Our engineering staff has reviewed this application. So, this abandonment is a little bit different than most abandments here that we've presented on previously. You can see the area that we're talking about tonight is highlighted in the blue color. And if the alley is actually coming up through here, but on our GIS, the alley does not continue through this property, even though in the next slides I'll show, we have this kind of separated out as an alleyway on this property. So, some of this will make more sense. But, to me, this would be more, tonight would be a more county-initiated abandonment, or more of a housekeeping item where we're trying to clean up this discrepancy in lot lines for this potential abandonment. So, like I said, as on the previous slide, you see that everything outlined was in blue, was bordering this entire fenced-in area. However, it's still saying it's an alleyway through this person's backyard. There's a shed that's here, an AC unit, and basically the fencing stops the alleyway. And it's been like this for many years, dating back to nineteen sixty-three, before this person owned this property. It was in a family that was owned by this property, and they paid taxes on what was this, a lot here, a lot here, a lot here, here. And this was considered a taxable item that they paid taxes on in nineteen sixty-three. So, these pictures were provided by the owner, because we couldn't access their property. So, this is like the inside of their fence, looking north, and then inside of their property, looking south. We did not have any utility comments on, in this area. And it says here, we did not have public comments. We did receive one comment of another property owner in this area, saying that they would like to maybe pursue an abandonment on their property, but it didn't really affect this abandonment here. So, this is a list of your potential motions. Our recommended motion is highlighted in red. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm here to answer anything.
Any questions, gentlemen?
I have one. So, how will this fix the fact that the alleyway is running through their property?
Yes, sir. Like I said, there's a discrepancy here, and this was, I consulted with our county attorney, and this was the best method. We've done these internal or county-initiated abandments previously. We haven't done one in a while, but this has been done previously where it's more of a cleanup or some housekeeping about this area that would allow them to pay for their taxes properly and not allow this to be considered part of this alley that where it would now, you know, end at this barrier right here. There's a discrepancy in our GIS in this plat that was provided.
At one time, at one time, didn't you say they were paying taxes on this?
Yes, sir. In nineteen sixty-three, the previous owner paid taxes on this when we did research from our GIS department here at the county. So, basically, this is just a more of an internal cleanup type thing. And this is the best way that I felt like we could present this, or that was brought to me in this manner.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. So, Jason, is the county the applicant, or is Mr. Molina the applicant?
Mr. Molina was the applicant. I don't think he knew how else to do this. And this is, you know, the way that he wanted to obtain this property, so the county is not the applicant in this. But, that was the route that he took.
Thank you. The reason I ask that, Commissioners, is if taxes have been paid on this, it seems like it should be an internal issue and no applicant fee for tidying up the records, is my thoughts. So, that's just consideration, and I'll leave that for others to consider.
What I understood was taxes were paid until nineteen sixty-three, and then they haven't been paid since.
Okay.
That's what I got out of the presentation.
No, it said they paid taxes. I'm not sure if Mr. Molina has paid taxes on it, but the previous owner, it had been in their family, and they had paid taxes on it. But, I'm not, I did not get a response whether or not Mr. Molina had paid taxes on this. I think he, I think they were under the assumption that it was their property, and it's been a miscommunication, from my understanding, is what, that they owned the alley, that this alley was part of their property, as to why, you know, they have a shed there and a fenced-in area and an AC unit would be, my assumption, that he, you know, that's why he thought that that was part of his property, I guess. But, he wanted to, like I said, this is an odd case, but this is what we've discovered, and this would be an internal type cleanup type thing.
Okay. With that, to support Commissioner Duncan, it's a house cleaning thing for Glen County, and if Mr. Molina has paid fees, I would suggest he be reimbursed for those as we clean this up. I don't believe it was incumbent upon him to have to do this.
I agree. So, if you put the motion up.
Well, we got a public hearing.
Oh, all right.
Okay. Is there anyone that wants to come up and speak against this abandonment? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone want to come up and speak in favor?
Hello, Mark Monroe here. I'm Neri Molina. He works for me on a lot of projects. I'm a builder on St. Simon's Island, so I'm kind of helping through this process. But, he has been paying taxes on those properties since he's owned it.
That's what we thought. Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to come and speak in favor? Seeing none, I'm gonna close that portion. Commissioners, Jason, can you give us, please? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve for AB dash two-five dash five as presented.
Second. Properly motion in second. Commissioner Neal, Commissioner Booker, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Public hearing, number thirty-seven will be a public hearing also. Land use ZM twenty-five dash nine forty-five sixty-eight New Jessup Highway rezoned. Consideration of a change of zoning request for approximately point six-four-seven acres of Highway Commercial to one-family residential R-nine. Property is located at forty-five sixty-eight New Jessup Highway. Parcel number oh-three dash oh-four-two-fourteen, Daniel Darrell Dawson, agent for VAMG Ventures LLC, Abel Garcia, owner. Mr. Carey?
Good evening, Commissioners. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a application for rezoning. The request is to have the property rezoned from Highway Commercial to R-nine, one-family residential. Just a little bit of backstory, this property was rezoned back in the early two thousands from Highway Commercial to R-nine, or from R-nine to Highway Commercial, and now they are requesting to rezone back to Highway Commercial, or to R-nine, to support their current use as a one-family
Any questions?
Is there a residence on this as it currently sits?
Yes, sir.
I hope so.
So, here's the site right here. So, this is a, just an overview of our comp plan and how this rezon would be compatible. In this area, a mix of commercial and residential is sought after and encouraged for higher use for residential properties. So, this property was pretty derelict back in two thousand eight. So, this is when the original rezon went through to go from R-nine to Highway Commercial to facilitate a sale and commercial development. However, the home that was there, it's been there, was unkept and back in the woods. And in two thousand twenty-five, and since two thousand and eight, it's been rehabbed and taken care of and put to good use.
All right.
Your survey of the property. The planning commission did vote to recommend approval of this application. And these are your possible motions. Commissioner Dawson is here, Darrell Dawson, the agent for the homeowner, and that is all from staff.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions, gentlemen?
Who owns the flower shop? Is it the residence, owner of the residence?
No, the owner owns this property right here, this track, this is the track in question, and the flower shop is right here.
Any other questions?
No.
All right. Thank you, Chris. All right. We're gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Would you come up now, state your name? Five minutes. Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone want to speak in favor? Come up, state your name, you'll have five minutes. Seeing none, Commissioners, I'm gonna close it, and it's back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, listen to the other comments. I move to approve ZM dash two-five dash nine as presented.
Second.
Second.
All right. Properly motion by Commissioner Booker, seconded by Commissioner Swett and Commissioner Tosterson. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Number thirty-eight, it's a public hearing. Consider amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Glen County, Georgia, to revise section two-point-eight dash six, two dash six, eight dash six, two dash eight dash seven, two dash eight dash nine, and two dot dash eight dot ten to the Airport Commission ordinance change to the composition of the Airport Commission to include one county commissioner appointed by the Board of Commissioners to establish terms under which such appointment will serve to update provisions related to vacancies and removal of members and for other purposes. Who's doing the report on this one?
I can talk to this one. Mr. Mumford? So, Commissioners, this does what the, I guess, the agenda item says, and it's pretty straightforward. It adds a county commission appointment to the Airport Commission. So, it's a term of one year. It also increases their composition from five members to six. So, they'll have six members now to account for the one additional county commission appointment. And your next agenda item, or later tonight, is to appoint that person to the Airport Commission. And that's it. That's just what this does.
So, how would they break a tie?
So, that the chair would only vote in the case of a tie vote. So, otherwise, they would not vote on that.
You're gonna need to speak into your mics a little closer. It just sounds like Mom, like, be on here.
Okay. So, the chair with six people is still six people, right?
That's right. So, the chair would not vote in most cases, unless there's a, you know, a tie if someone's absent. But, otherwise, they will not be voting on items, so there wouldn't be that situation where there's a tie vote with five members voting. So, if you can scroll, if you can scroll to section...
How do we get to a tie with five?
You wouldn't. You wouldn't have a tie on that. So, but if there was somebody absent, so there's only four members except for the chair, that chair could vote to break that tie if somebody was absent, or had to recuse themselves on a conflict or something like that. So, the five members excluding the chair would be the voting members, and the chair would only vote in the case of a tie if one member was absent.
I understand it, but it seemed like it would have been better for us just to do two people. And I think I missed this discussion.
Yeah. So, the reason there are six, that's a request of the Airport Commission, is to bump it up to six, so that wouldn't change their existing terms and who's appointed to that. So, just clean that up from their end. Those other, those other five are members right now are all appointed by the EDA. So, those appointments would stay the same. And this just adds one county commission appointment to their existing structure. So, rather than decide who was going to be termed out or off Airport Commission, they just proposed that we bump it up from five members to six members.
I understand, I think, but I'm gonna abstain, because, you know, if I was consulted with this process. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, public hearing. I'm gonna open it up to anyone opposed to this change. Seeing none, I'll close that. Anyone in favor of this change? Seeing none, I'll close it up. There's no vote needed here?
You do need a vote. Yes.
We do need a vote? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer the, I'll offer the motion to adopt the ordinance change as proposed.
Second.
Or, ordinance amendment, excuse me.
All right. Properly motioned in second. All in favor? You got questions? All right. Properly motioned and second. All in favor? You got questions?
No.
Six. Six in favor?
I don't.
They did. I got it written down. And Commissioner Booker's going to abstain or any against? No, not if there's six. So.
Yes, abstain.
All right. Thank you. Number thirty-nine. Receive and approve the chairman's appointment of Wayne Neal to fill the county commissioner appointment on the Airport Authority Commission with initial term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-five, ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, or until his successor is appointed by the Board of Commissioners. And I am going to nominate Mr. Neal. Any? Do I get a second?
Second.
All right. I'm sorry, I'm a little slow right now. All in favor? Seven over, thank you. All right. Receive and approve the chairman's appointment of Walter Rafalsky to the Glen County Glen Brunswick Development Authority with initial term beginning August first, two thousand twenty-five, ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five pursuant to Senate Bill thirty-four. I don't like to nominate myself, but I guess I had to. Do we need a second here?
You don't. You don't.
Don't need it. Do we, do we vote on that one?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's probably motioned and second. All in favor? Thank you. That was strange. All right. Number forty-one. Consider adoption of an amendment to the Glen County Ordinance Article for Section two dash thirteen dash fifty-five and Section two dash thirteen dash fifty-six to clarify and regulate the operation of bikes and e-bikes on county-maintained paths to authorize the use of Class One and Class Two e-bikes and establish operational rules for bikes on paths. This is sponsored by the Board of Commissioners. Any, any, any statements?
I'll offer comments. Thank you, Chairman. With the availability of e-bikes becoming more and more affordable and more popular, there's more activity on our multipass. And I think it's appropriate that we make amendments to our current ordinance. Number one, to approve the e-bikes, because currently motorized vehicles, which would include e-bikes, are prohibited at this time. So this amendment permits those. And then also is we need to address the proper operation of that equipment for the safety of all users of the multipaths. So I'm in favor of this adoption countywide, and that it would allow people who wish to travel this way for leisure or otherwise to use the county pathways to do such, and also to learn what the rules are for the safety of all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I just want to make sure it's, is this, this doesn't cover the city.
Correct.
Just the county.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I've, I've got a couple of comments. You know, I agree that the ordinance needs to be updated. It hadn't been updated since two thousand and three, I think, when it was originally written. And I know since that time, e-bikes and things, and motorized scooters have, have come into being. And I just believe that we need to do more research on this. You know, I'm a conservative. I support government, personal representation of the law, but I also don't want to over-criminalize this. But I don't know if we have followed all the steps that we need to make at this point with enforcement, how that's going to occur. Or I know the manager made a comment the other, in an email that I read, in reference to the judiciary, are the, are the, are the courts on board with this? Are they going to, are they going to enforce our ordinances that we, that we, if, if we pass it or don't pass it to, at this, at this date? I also would like to know that, is it going to affect the entire county? And I understand the problems that are lying on St. Simons Island. And if this ordinance could be restricted to St. Simons Island, then that's one thing. But if it affects the account, the county, my district, we have sidewalks out there. I know there's sidewalks out at Harrah's Riggers and Blah Island and all these other places. And now I'm, I'm concerned about how that's going to be affected with this ordinance taking place. So with that being said, I'd like to defer this until we can get a little bit more information and we, we get to make sure that the state courts are going to enforce our ordinances. And I don't think we've had any conversation with them in reference to this. And there's no need in putting together an ordinance that it's not going to be enforced. So with that being said, I'd like to defer this item.
You're making an, by word of motion?
And I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to defer number forty-one. Any-
Are you giving a time specific?
Oh, no, I'm not going to give a time specific, because I don't know how much time it's going to take for us to meet with the judiciary, see where they are on this ordinance, and how they, how they plan to enforce it, and what goes along with that. I also would like to know how it's going to affect other districts. I don't know how long that's going to take. I would like to say thirty days, but I would like to also say, hopefully, we can get back to this before the end of the year.
Okay. Any other conversation?
I'll offer another comment. Commissioner Tosterson, not intended to rebut what you're, you've, you've stated, but the state law already addresses Class One and Class Two e-bikes. This ordinance parallels the language that's in the state code. We additionally address the e-toys, which would be scooters or the monowheel and other electric toys that people might use on the pathways. In, in my view, this is a common sense approach to addressing a problem that can be pretty easy to address and inform the public of, of how they should operate these vehicles for their safety and for those that they happen to pass on the multipaths. So I don't think it's too soon to pass this ordinance. It's not too rigorous. The other thought is, with regard to the judiciary, you know, that's, that is their area of review, whether they choose to endorse the fine that we would want to levy on a person who's misbehaving or misuse of, of one of these vehicles on the pathways. We also have Class Three e-bikes that are being used now on the pathways. And those bikes are capable of doing in excess of thirty-five miles an hour. So I think this is a good approach. You liken it to making sausage. There's lots of different recipes, but this is one that'll work to start with. The other thing is, we have people who are using Class One and Class Two bikes now. They are not permitted, but this ordinance would allow them to use it, use those bikes on the multipass legally. So I would implore my fellow commissioners to give a positive vote to this, not defer it, but to act tonight.
Anybody else?
Commissioner Duncan, my comment on that is, county ordinance cannot supersede state law. State law already has their, there in place. If this could be tweaked to just take care of St. Simons and not the entire county, I don't have a problem with it. But it's affecting my district and other districts that are in the county, and I do have a problem with that. And with that being said, that's why I'm asking for the deferral.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yeah. Let me weigh in here. I, I would support the deferral if we can put a time limit on it. I, I agree with Commissioner Duncan that, that this needs to get passed. But I do think, agreeing with you, that there's some questions to be answered that we could get more clarity on. If we pass this, and our, our, our state court judges are not going to process this, and it's going to hamstring our police to be able to, be able to write tickets or anything to enforce it. So I would like to get some clarification myself, but I would very much like to see it come back next month, within, you know, thirty days, or, or second meeting in, in August, to be able to, to get this on the books.
I, I would respectfully ask that if we could go forty-five days or to the first meeting in September.
It's, it's your motion.
You got to change the motion.
Well, my motion is that we, we defer this to the first meeting in September. I don't know the date.
September fourth.
This, September fourth of this year, and then bring it back before us for a vote.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of the deferral? Who's here, your right hand?
Do we get a, a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor of the deferral?
Four.
Four. All right. Those against the deferral? All right. I guess we're deferred until September. Five. It was five, wasn't it?
It was four.
Four?
Four, three.
All right. Number forty-two has been deferred until August the seventh, twenty-five. No one signed up for public comment. Mr. Attorney, do we have need for executive session?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have items, personnel, property acquisition, and pending litigation.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Well, so moved, work for that area.
It's better than having actually have a vote.
Okay.
Well, but vote, but I mean, do we need to-
I make a motion that we go into executive session for the pro, purpose of personnel and possible litigation. Is that what you said?
And property acquisition.
And property acquisition.
Second.
Okay. Properly motioned and second. All in favor? We're in recess.
I have a motion and second to come out of executive session. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the executive session minutes from June 5th, 2025 and July 15th, 2025 executive session.
Alrighty, property motion and second, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Newell, Mr. Clark, all in favor? We're adjourned. We're adjourned.